Tell me when you're ready.
We're ready.
Oh, well, anyway, good afternoon, everyone. It's indeed an honor and pleasure to stand before you. As the mayor of the city of Colleen, I take great honor to do appreciation. My schedule is busy, but it's not too busy to appreciate the individuals that have a positive impact on the city of Colleen. The November 5th, 2009 tragedy is very sad, and we honor our men and women that served this great country, as well as our first responders and everyone in this room, because you are the face of our community, our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, Police Department, Park and Rec Department. You are our face, City of Colleen, and our volunteers that give so much back to this community. You're part of our family now, and I wanted to take out the time on behalf of the board, the November 5th, 2009 board members. We have some here, Roxanne and Clarence, I see two of them. Chief Kobinski was a part of that board. Park and Rec Director, raise your hand, sir. I'll get you when you get up here. Part of the board, but they were not able to be here today and say thank you. And also, on behalf of the family members that came down for the ceremony, without you, your time and your effort that you put in, it was a beautiful event to remember those that made the ultimate sacrifice for our great nation. So, we would like to show you a small token of our appreciation and say thank you, especially our Colleen Civic Center Director. She's over there just so kind and nice. Thank you for everything, because you coordinated most of this for us. You wouldn't be young for us, and we are truly proud to have you a part of Team Colleen. Thank you. With that being said, I would turn it over to our Communication Director, Janelle Ford.
Thank you. And so, when I call you up, Brett, I will like to get the individual photos. So, when I call you up, you're going to get your certificate from our mayor, and you're just going to take a quick photo. You'll get your coin from Mr. Stewart, and then you can take your seat, okay? We have our Executive Director of Parks and Recreation here, and that's Mr. Antonio Murphy. So, we have several of our Parks and Rec team members here, so he's here to support them as well.
We need Public Works Directors. Is he here? That's the first group, Public Works.
He is not. I do not believe he is here.
Assistant Director?
We do have, okay.
We'll go with him first, sir. Then, when yours come up before you. Hey, sir. Good to see you, Janelle.
All right. So, again, they may not be in order, but they will be in order by department. So, first, Mr. Chad Black. Remember, come take a quick photo, and then you'll get your coin.
Mr. Black, thank you.
Look at Brett, please.
Look at Chad.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just say something. Elijah Shingu, and I apologize if I mispronounce any names. And now, is that all of Public Works, and we're on Parks and Rec now? All right. Can our Parks and Rec Director come back up? Mr. Antonio Murphy is our Parks and Rec Director, and we're going to start with Mr. Kayla Reyes.
Hold on for a minute, Mr. Kayla. Thank you. There are some individual employees that go beyond what you can ask of them, and, Ms. Kayla, you are one of those individuals. You played a tremendous part in setting up everything from the flags, the grounds, and making sure everything was secure and safe with the chairs. Anything we asked you for, you played such a valuable part, and I would like for you all to give him another round of applause.
Will you take our picture?
All right, Mr. Paul Pilonapa.
Thank you so much, sir.
Keon Cobas. How'd you say your last name?
Thank you, sir, so much.
Roger Harvey. Craig Eilin, or Elin? Elin?
Thank you, sir.
Ellery Duncan.
Thank you, sir, so much.
All right, and I know that our Chief of Police, thank you, Ms. Murphy, I know that our Chief of Police is at a training, a conference, right now, so we don't have our Chief of Police here to do our officers to officers, but we definitely still want to recognize you, and the first one is Sergeant Miguel Mirabel.
Thank you so much. Wait a minute, sir. Thank you.
You know, there was a saying when I was in OBC, that's Officer Basic Candidate School in San Antonio, we had a speech that someone presented to us, and they said, "Whenever there's a breakdown in democracy and corruption in the world, I will be there." This is our first responders, our Police Department and Fire Department. When we're at home asleep, don't have a cure in the world, they out there constantly, day and night, putting their lives on the line to protect us. And we had top security at the November 5th, 2009, as if the President of the United States was coming. So, let's give them an extra round of applause for everything they do every day.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, for your service. Thank you so much.
And Mayor, I know you have nothing to say about Chief Kobinski, right?
Yeah. Nothing? Come on up, Chief. Chief is a fireball. If you, you know, if he's there, things are happening, and that goes for Joe Stewart, too. This is our Fire Chief. Chief, you've been with us less than two years, four years? Oh, my God, how time flies. Wow. He's part of our family, especially his wife, Jen. So, Chief Kobinski, no matter what we ask of him, or Chief Lopez, they're going to ensure that if they're not there, they're going to have the personnel. But Chief Kobinski, November 5th, 2009 ceremony meant so much to him that he made sure that he was there, and he had the plan, our emergency management, him and Joe, and we hired the new personnel, but they ensured the safety of everyone there, ensuring medics was in place in case we had that, it was an accident. Police Department had squad teams, even though the turnout was not at the level we expected, but the preparation for it made us feel assured that it was on Election Day this happened, that we were safe. And for that, Chief, thank you and your paramedics and your team for being there and ensuring throughout the whole process, everything was in the right place at the right time. Thank you.
And Mayor, you mentioned Mr. Joe Stewart, who's over there giving out the coins and thinks he's going to escape from being recognized, but...
Bring your whole coin with you. Thank you, Chief. This is a, hold it up, Chief, would you mind? This is a miracle one that I give out to everyone that have done something significant. That means you have gone beyond, and it takes a lot, because Janelle said, "Ma'am, we forgot the coins." I say, "Go get them," and she came out with a bag full of them, because this is significant to us. November 5th had an impact on this community, something that we will never forget, and we will honor those that lost their lives and their families. So, it's significant what you did. Don't think, don't downplay it. We truly appreciate you. Joe, emergency management. You're going to see him a lot in his counterparts, his two of them, and we got a new director. If you were at our Christmas parade, you saw somebody speeding through the traffic, that was Joe. Why do he do that? He's assessing the environment that we're in. They're riding through, they're sure, with the police. Police is everywhere. You don't see them. Squad was out there, but you didn't see them. They have this little drone going everywhere, because what's going on in the world today is danger. You don't even think about it. But when I see those officers that I know that may be undercover, or if I see Joe Stewart speeding and whistling through things, I feel okay that they're going to have our back in a time of crisis. Joe is a part of that team. I am emergency management, too, but I gave over my rights to the experts, and it's him and his boss, the director, and they're doing the same thing I would do. I'm informed. Chief Kobinski is in charge, but you have to have those individuals that's out there building relationships with the FBI, CIA, Fort Cabosso. The Police Department do the same thing. This is the man. And now, if he fail, don't worry, I get him. But we truly appreciate you, Joe. I mean, seriously, everything you do. Thank you. He's bashful, too, to say the least. Thank you.
And Mayor, would you like to speak about the restaurants who donated?
You know, when you're planning an event, and ever since November 5th of 2009, the Chair of that committee was the Honorable Mayor Hancock, our former mayor. It takes a village to raise kids, but it takes business owners to assist in a time of need, to fulfill that drought that's missing for a community. So, Big Halls, Starbucks, y'all come on up here. I like love. I like love. Come on up. This is my mom, my second mother. Is Rudy's here, too? Oh, come on up, sir. All of you, come on up. So, what I can say about Big Halls, they have always been tremendous with helping out the community, and not only Colleen, other cities, but also they are good neighbors with Fort Cabosso. At that time, they became a good neighbor was Fort Hood, and that says a lot about how much they love our veterans, our active-duty soldiers, and their family members. So, when I say I call her mom, in 2017, some of you may not know, I lost my husband, and I didn't even know the up from the end. And Ms. Cheryl, my mom, came into my, she's always been a part of my life, but she came in from a different perspective, to love on me, to nourish me, to be there for me, not only her, her husband, and her son. And every time we picked up the phone, the City of Colleen, they have never, ever said no. They didn't know how many family members we was going to have, one year, two year before last. I think we had 30, 40, 50. They provided food this year, not only for the family members, but for the volunteers that was out there, and we had over 70 volunteers. That goes for Starbucks. That goes for Rudy. Rudy's provided the breakfast. Starbucks provided the coffee without the raw English breakfast tea, just saying, "For honey, stirred, double cup." But, yes, all right, just throwing an atmosphere. This is what makes a community become a part of your family. We can call on raising cane, too, but we had so many, so much food, and thank the Clarence Enoch. Clarence, please come up here and stand with them. Our committee had different responsibilities, the committee members, and one of his responsibilities were to go out and get us sponsors. So, when I say who don't know Clarence, I mean who don't know Clarence. So, I want y'all to please stand up, because they fed you, and me, and give them a round of applause for giving back to our community.
Much love, much love. Now, stand together. Give me some love. I miss you. Thank you. And Rudy's. I love you, but thank you. And I would also like for them to just say something briefly, once we take this photo, Ms. Janelle, if that's okay with you. They bashful. If you would like to say something, we would truly appreciate it, and let the community know how much you care about them. If you want to. Mama Cheryl, would you like to?
Thank you. Well, we've always been a part of this community. We've lived, I've lived here since the '60s, my husband as well, and my son was born here, so this is our community. We support the military, because we're all a military family. We support the community, because this is our life. We built the restaurant, not knowing that we would be able to be as giving as we are, but it warms our heart to give, and on a cold day, a warm heart's nice. So, we're going to continue giving. Anytime somebody calls, if we can do it, we're there. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Just want to say it's a pleasure to be here. I think I can speak for most of us and say, you know, either through parents or spouse, you know, we're probably same military-oriented and affiliated, and I think a big part of Starbucks and our stores here in Colleen is all about, you know, continuing to build that community in that sense of belonging, right, like bridging different businesses, the military, civilians, and so, for us, it's just inspiring to be a part of something bigger and to give back and to continue those relationships. So, looking forward to the future of what we can create.
I'd like to say thank you to Clarence, giving us the opportunity to help out and being here, and thank you, Mayor, as well. Rudy's, we're just happy to be a part of the community here. I know we wouldn't be here without all of y'all supporting us every day, and the military being a pillar in that as well. So, thank you very much for the opportunity, and we're happy to be a part of it.
Thank you. Once again, thank you all for your giving heart. Thank you, thank you.
Are you okay with this concluding our ceremony? Okay. All right, well, we thank you all for coming out today. I think the mayor has said more than enough for her appreciation, so thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you guys volunteering more in the future. You guys have a great day.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for coming out this afternoon to our workshop slash council meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Let the record shows that Mayor Protem, Councilmember Segaro, and Councilmember Alvarez is not Councilmember Solomon, would you be so kind to do the pledge of allegiance for Councilman Segaro? All right. Would you all please stand? Most gracious Father, we thank you once again for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon the City of Colleen. We thank you for our staff. We thank you for our residents. We thank you for our council. God bless our men and women that protect and serve this great nation and their family members, and those individuals in our community that would be alone or would lack any kind of resources to enjoy the holidays. Let us have an open heart, open mind, show kindness, show love to one another, continue to watch over us, guide us, protect us, our first responders, and all of our staff and employees, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. This is not working. Motion carries 4 to 0. Thank you. Is the Representative, Mr. Shea? Hey, sir, how are you?
Pretty good. How are you, Mayor?
I'm doing fine, and you?
Pretty good. Well, Mayor, Council, thank you for having me this afternoon. I am Shea Ludicki. I'm your Tax Assessor Collector for Bell County, and I'm here to give you not only one check, but two checks. The Commissioners and the County Judge could not be here with me today to present the Hotel Motel tax check to you guys, so they allowed me to do it. They are in closed session at the courthouse in Belton, so I'll start with the child safety check first. So, our registration fees were down just a little bit last year, but we do, still collect $462,124.50 for child safety fees to be spread out across all municipalities in Bell County. Since the program started in 2001, Bell County has collected and distributed $9,184,741.98 in these $1.50 fees. That's a lot of $1.50 fees that we've collected and distributed. In total, to the City of Colleen, we allocated and distributed $3,273,963.73 just to Colleen. Now, I'm going to read a little paragraph from my little letter here, telling you how the fees are supposed to be used in the state of Texas. As outlined in the Transportation Code, Chapter 502.403, the county tax assessor collector has the authority, with the approval from the Commissioners Court, to levy an additional $1.50 per vehicle registration, excluding those exempted by code. These funds are earmarked for existing crossing guard programs. In cases where a school district lacks a crossing guard program, the money may be allocated to initiatives promoting child safety, health, or nutrition. This includes support for child abuse prevention intervention, as well as drug and alcohol abuse prevention. Alternatively, the funds can be directed towards programs enhancing public safety and security, as per Article 102.014G of the Code of Criminal Procedure. The check for this year's allocation for Colleen is $171,771.68. This notification was also sent to the Colleen Independent School District Superintendent. So, there's one check. Now, I don't have a big presentation for Hotel Motel. This was just thrown in my lap, and usually the Commissioners have a bigger presentation, but the check for Hotel Motel for the City of Colleen is $86,819.24. So, with that, that concludes my presentations, and I'll be happy to hand y'all the checks.
Mr. Kay goes right there.
Oh, he's coming around already to get the checks. All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't clap. Please do not clap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Madam Secretary.
PR 24032, presentation recognizing Veterans Cemetery Customer Satisfaction Score.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson, our Assistant City Manager. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Council. It is my privilege to introduce Dr. John Kelly with the Texas State Veterans Cemetery.
Thank you.
He's got some exciting news for us today.
Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, and in case I don't get a chance to say it later, Merry Christmas. Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Staff, and citizens of Colleen, I bring you greetings from Austin. My name's Dr. John Kelly. I'm the Director of the Texas State Veterans Cemetery Program, and I'd like to make a presentation today to the City of Colleen. A bit of background, every year, the VA sends out surveys to the next of kin and the funeral directors of services conducted on our cemetery grounds. Pretty extensive survey, it's about 71 questions. I believe the most important question they ask is, overall, are you satisfied with your service at the state veterans cemetery? Because if you think about the question, the answer is a true customer satisfaction score. And so, the VA sends them out, and the VA collects them directly back. We have no hand in those surveys whatsoever. In 2000, the VA then compiles a report and provides us compiled report information, including a customer satisfaction score. In 2021, the cemetery program achieved a 97.46% customer satisfaction rate, which is a pretty incredible rate, and if you check against the corporate world, their goal is 90% or above, and in 2021, we're at 97%. In 2022, it went up to 98.12%. 2023, last year, it went up to 99.03% customer satisfaction. So, I'm here today with the 2024 score. State of Texas Veterans Land Board, who all, whom these presidents shall come, greetings. Know ye that the City of Colleen is recognized for their dedication and unparalleled service to our cherished veterans and their families. The Texas State Veterans Cemetery Program contributed directly to the achievement of an extraordinary 99.11% customer satisfaction rating in the Texas State Veterans Cemetery Program. Signed, Dawn Buckingham, Chairwoman, Veterans Land Board. So, these great employees standing behind me, provided by you, the city, and taken care of, ever since February... So, these great employees standing behind me, provided by you, the city, and taken care of ever since February, achieved a 99.11% customer satisfaction score. And for that, you should be proud, and for that, I am very proud. And I came here to thank you for taking care of these wonderful employees.
Thank you so much. We are truly honored and grateful for that. And Council, if you don't mind, Madam City Attorney, we want to go down and take a picture with them. All right, Council?
Mr. Kegel, you can join us, please.
Assistant City Manager?
Yeah, I got her.
Alvarez?
Thank you all so much, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you so much. Thank you so much, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your hard work, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All, thank you for your work, thank you. You're welcome, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. One of the things that I am so proud of, it's a lot of things about the city of Colleen, but one of the things, sir, that I am the most proud of is the Council voting to take care of our veterans and also to take care of the employees that work at the cemetery. That was the greatest partnership this city could have done in an effort to show what it means to be committed to taking care of others. And I thank you both, you and Sergeant Major Goff, for your hard work and dedication. Thank you. Discussion items. And Mrs. Wilson, I know you just took that over. Thank you for the communication and working with them and just ensuring that we stay 99 or higher.
They do a phenomenal job out there.
They do, thank you so much. Madam, let the record show, Councilmember Alvarez is present. Discussion items, Council, you have three times each to talk three minutes. Madam Secretary.
DS 24074, receive quarterly financial report.
Thank you. Mrs. Tangaline, good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. This item is the quarterly report for the last quarter of fiscal year 2024. We have an overview, we're gonna look at the staffing indicators, the economic indicators, and then we're gonna review the major operating funds, and we're gonna end with the ARPA funding update. For fiscal year 2024, we end up with 225 separation, but we have new hires of 312. The police safety percentage field was 92% for police and 100% for fire. For the new construction apartments, we have 420 single-family residential in 2023 compared to 599 in fiscal year 2024. For duplexes, we have 70 in 2024, and then we have only 59 in 2023. This is your annual sales taxes. As you can see how the trend of the budget against the actuarials. And then for fiscal year 2024, we end up with $25 million, 25.6% compared to 25.1% the last fiscal year. So, it was an increase of $100,000 for sales taxes. This is your breakdown of sales taxes by economic category. Now, we're going into the major funds. With General Fund, we end up to 100% of budget for revenue with $123 million collected. For expenses, we spent 95% of the budget, and our net change was $1 million with the fund balance ending at 1.05. For water and sewer, we did a 99% of operating revenues and 90% of operating expenses. Our net position beginning was 12.6, and our net position ending was $14 million. For our solid waste fund, our operating revenues were 108% of our budget with a 97% of operating expenses. And the changing net position was $160,000 with the net position ending in $8.4 million. For our drainage, our operating revenues were 101%, and our operating expenses were 86%. Our change in net position was $120,000 with a net position ending in $1.7 million. For our aviation funds, our operating revenues were 91%, and expenses were 87%. Our change in net position was $160,000 negative, and then the net position ending was $1.46. For our hotel occupant tax fund, we collected 74% of total revenues, and then our expenditures were only 79%. And our fund balance ending was $1.7 million. And our last fund for Street Maintenance Fund, our total revenues were 104% with $10 million collected. Total expenditures, we spent 69%. Just remember, the capital ally, this money rolls over. But our net change in fund was 2.81, and then our fund balance ending was 12.6 million. And that was our major funds and other special revenue funds. Now, I want to give a quick update on the ARPA funding. As you can see, all these projects are completed with a check mark. We work in the H-bug replacement, and it grants to the arts. For General Fund, we have a couple of few that we already completed. We allocated $7.6 million, and we already spent $7.4 out of the $7.6 million. For governmental CIP, we completed ones, all of these ones are in progress right now. We allocated $17.9 million, we already spent $9.1 million, with the majority of money being here at the EOC. For your other appropriations, we allocated $1 million, we already spent $886. We completed a few of them. And then out of the $29.1 million allocated, we already spent $18.6. Most of the funds are already encumbered. These are the funds that we have on encumber right now, it's $112,000. We have some projects that are already completed, and we have identified some projects that need additional funds. And then right now, we would like a, we're requesting a motion of direction to reallocate this $112,000 to the Police Range and Training Facility and the Emergency Operations Center. That way, we have all the funds allocated by December, and obligated by December 21st. And that's all I have, I just would like to have a motion of direction to be able to reallocate these funds.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kegel.
Mayor and Council, and the audience, just to let you know, I think there's a little confusion on this, is that the ARPA funds have to be committed by the end of this month. Some people think it's the end of next year, but it's not. You have to have some sort of contract or obligation by the end of this month. So, of the $29.1 million that we received, we have now obligated everything except $112,000. And what we're asking to do now, to make sure that we get all of that obligated and spent, is to allocate those two amounts to two projects that we already have contracts on, so the money's obligated. And we spent on those contracts, but that's where the remainder was needed the most. Be happy to answer any questions.
And that's the Police Range and Training Facility and the Emergency Operations Center.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I submit a motion of direction to reallocate the $112,694.58 to the Emergency Operations Center and Police Range Training Facility as indicated in the presentation.
Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
Councilwoman Cobb.
I had a quick question on slide number 29. The difference between the $7 million, $623,000, $7 million, $459,000 went into the $112,000? Or is that just, is that leftover money, the difference between that, those two? I'm just trying to understand, what did I miss?
This amount allocated is what we allocated, the amount spent is actually what we have spent that does not include encumbrances.
Okay, I got it now, thank you. When I saw it, I said, oh, we have some more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any more discussion?
Madam, I did have, after we voted a motion of direction, I had some other questions.
Okay, please.
Unrelated to the ARPA funding. Okay.
Once we vote on this, we're moving on. So, if you have any questions, you got to do it now.
First question I have is about the commercial permits. Mr. Kegel, is that normal for a city our size to have so low compared to last, oh, in that reporting period?
Are you talking about the change from last year to this year?
Yes.
I mean, it goes in cycles. I don't think that big of a change is all that unusual. But the actual commercial is not that much different from year to year.
Thanks. And another question I have is, there was a decrease in the, well, there was an increase in our hotel occupancy tax compared to last year, but all the other funds had a decrease. Is there, we have a, we have a reason for that? If you can't answer now, send it to me later.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part?
Through the funds, I noticed, well, for the hot, we saw a decrease in the net change in fund balance.
Yes.
Okay, you.
Yes.
Thanks.
The main thing is the short-term rentals.
Okay.
Now, our overall hotel occupancy was down a very small amount, but we had a much larger number projected for the short-term rentals, and that has not materialized, and that is the real difference.
Okay, thanks. And then I did want to notice, I know the solid waste was the only fund, other fund that had an increase compared to last year. See, solid waste was, went up about a few pennies, and everything else went down.
Are you referring to the ending position?
Compared to the actual, compared to, yes, compared to the actual fiscal year 23. I mean, that's a positive for us, we increased, but every, all the other funds went down.
The main thing there is going to be more customers.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions for Mr. Kegel? Mr. Kegel, do you have anything you want to say?
No, ma'am.
All right. Now, Council, I'd like to say thank you all. This is a great investment in our police and our fire department. All in favor, yes; all opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Discussion agenda items, four through 11, for the December 10th, 2024 regular session. Council, there is no final actions until we get to the regular session. Madam Secretary.
MN 24029, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of November 19, 2024. RS 24221, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment report for the quarter ended September 30, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, welcome back, Ms. Tangaline.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. We have Mr. Scott Grover on soon, and he's gonna give us the presentation for the last quarter 24 for the investment report.
Thank you. How you doing, sir?
I am doing well, how is everyone doing today?
Just great.
Great, thank you for having me. Hard to believe we're wrapping up the end of the calendar year here. I know my, my kids are very excited for Christmas in a couple of weeks. So, we are, we're eagerly awaiting and trying to keep everyone in line. But I know everyone has a full day, so keep it brief here. I wanted to share my screen and just give a quick update on what's transpired since our last quarterly meeting. And you should be seeing my screen here shortly. There we go. So, the biggest takeaways, I would say, from this, this last quarter and even into, you know, current events up to today is, you know, we had the Fed meeting in September and also in November, which resulted in the Fed cutting interest rates at both meetings. So, up to today, the Fed has cut interest rates by three-quarters of a percent, and we're actually expecting them to continue that, that cutting cycle at the next meeting here in December on the 18th. So, what that really has been doing is impacting short-term interest rates, mostly cash and overnight interest rates where the city invests. This has been a big discussion point that we've all been having leading up to this point. So, I'm very happy with the positioning of the portfolio and being able to lock in interest rates in advance of these recent decisions. And then more recently, we also had the election outcome in November, which actually produced higher interest rates. We had kind of an anomaly in the marketplace where interest rates jumped up a little bit after the election outcome. And then we also saw the stock market rise at the same level. So, you know, all in, things have kind of taken a, a little bit of a positive reaction coming out of the, the election, and since normalized, and we've seen things, you know, be a little bit more stable since those current events. You know, so looking ahead here, the biggest focus is obviously trying to protect interest income for as long as we possibly can as the Fed is anticipated to endure this cutting cycle. The biggest reason the Fed is cutting rates at this point is more so focused on the jobs picture. You know, inflation has started to come down, and it's really not a big discussion point at this time. But because job growth has been slowing, the Fed wants to make sure we're getting ahead of any sort of economic contractions or slowdowns to be able to ease policy at a nice gradual pace heading into next year. So, you did see interest rates drop from August to September. You can see the green, the teal bar to the orange bar, that decrease occurring in September. However, as of today, that orange bar is actually slightly higher. You know, so the yield curve is starting to flatten, which is a positive, and it allows us to work higher yields into the portfolio for a little longer time period while front-end rates are dropping. So, overall, we have more time here to continue working on locking in rates and putting the city's portfolio in the best position possible. Right now, our biggest focus is on liquidity needs and meeting current expenditures. This is the time period where the city historically is in a low cash point because expenditures are high and revenues are lower. And so, at this point in December and into the next few months, we'll start to expect tax receipts coming in for revenue, and then we'll be able to start repositioning some maturities and looking at some cash opportunities at that point. So, overall, everything is in great shape. Even with interest rates coming down, the weighted average yield actually ticked up a little higher in the month of September. And when you look at the overall positioning of the portfolio, I'm happy to say, you know, we have quite a bit maturing inside of a year to help cover current expenditures. And then we'll be focusing more in that three-to-five-year area to lock in interest rates where they are as we have those opportunities down the road. So, in closing, looking at the year-to-date interest earned, the city looked at just over $11.7 million the city looked at just over 11.7 million in interest earned on the portfolio for that, for this past fiscal year, and we're expecting that to stay steady, if not slightly higher, heading into next year. Any questions or feedback for me?
Thank you, sir, you and your team for your hard work. The City of Colleen is moving in the right direction. Thank you so much, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to your team.
Thank you. We appreciate the partnership.
Me too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Madam Secretary?
RS 24222, consider a memorandum resolution approving a three-year agreement with Vermont Systems for recreation software in the amount of $93,139.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Reston, how you doing, sir? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And I'm teaming in on this with Mr. Murphy. You know, Mr. Murphy has just started, and so I kind of have been the middle person helping them out in this process, and we'll continue to help them through this procurement of this, this product. So the item before you tonight is the, for our Parks and Rec management software. So for the past 15 years, we've used the Parks and Rec has been using ActiveNet, Recreation Manual Software to process all their programs. An RFP was issued out in, in June of 2024, and we received six proposals. And we went through, the, the staff that was there, we went through the proposals, and we selected a couple of companies to look at and do some demos on. And then we selected Vermont Systems, which I'll be going through here in a minute. So the current software, ActiveNet, failed to provide necessary customer service and stability to meet the needs of the Parks and Rec. And I do want to point out, they also did not send a proposal in for this, when we, with this out. So the transition to Vermont Systems, RecTrak, provides a capability and functionality to expand and meet the needs of the Parks and Rec. There are currently 34 cities that are using this software within the state of Texas. Vermont System was chosen for the software, 30 years' experience. It allows more flexibility to expand. It's got full test database for inputting information, off-site support providing during implementation and onsite available for our final setup. This is a three-year agreement that includes the implementation, deployment of the software, which consists of integration, data migration, and training. So our first year cost is $38,250,000, and then year two cost and year three costs are 26, with the anticipated 5% of the $28,000. So our staff recommends that the city council approve the contract with Vermont Systems, RecTrak, in the amount of $93,139, and that the city manager or designee be expressly authorized to execute any and all changes within the amount set by state and local law. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Reston, thanks. I don't want to drum up this from the summer, but this will be protected by our, our.
Yeah, this is a software as a service, so it's not onsite.
Okay, so we won't have, we won't have to worry about any.
No.
Nobody trying to creep in through that way.
We hope not.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
RS 24223, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing an agreement with the Ponder Company, Inc., for the replacement of the gym floor for the Rosa Hereford Community Center in the amount of $98,404.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Zager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and fellow council members. So we're here to ask the award of the contract for the gym floor. So this is again on the Rosa Hereford Expansion Project. You know, let's see, it's, this was included in 2020 Capital Improvement Plan. Of course, we know we hired the contractor in '23 for HCS to do the construction, the remodel. And of course, we've been here for the roof and a few other changes. So we're here now to talk about the gym floor, which is actually a kind of vinyl floor that's out there. It's been damaged throughout the years, and it's kind of served its life. So we're looking to have it replaced. However, we couldn't use the existing contractor because of the amount of the cost of the floor as it relates to contract bid laws. With the, the roof change, we were at that 25% limit, so we had to go with a supplier, who's an independent supplier of this product, and they will be the ones actually be installing the floor. So Parks and Rec were the ones that reached out to Ponder for options and prices and what kind of solutions we have to install a new gym floor. This is kind of what they're proposing, this Polastic Classic. It is a vinyl laminate, multi-layer type of product. And it kind of shows what we have here, where you have that tacky adhesive, you have a shock pad, a sealer, and of course, you have that resin. So it is kind of a multi-layer resin epoxy polymer. And then the floor system, well, it's a polyurethane surface over high-performance base mat. It has a 25-year warranty against defects. The proposal to remove the existing floor and install the new one is $98,400. The installation will be coordinated with our existing product, our contractor, so we can coordinate it and not affect the opening date that we already have established with our contractor. And then staff recommends the approval of the agreement with the Ponder Company for the Rosa Hereford Community Center gym floor in the amount of $98,404.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary?
RS 24224, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of library books from Ingram Library Services through the Texas Smart Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $146,000 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Ms. McNair, good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. The state of Texas, ma'am, I would like to introduce Library Services Director Deanna Frazee, who's here to assist with this presentation and answer any questions that may be presented. The background information is as read. The state of Texas approved the TechSmartBuy contracts with seven vendors for library books in 2020. In October of this year, 2024, the state exercised an option to renew the contracts through October of 2025. Ingram Library Services contract offers the highest discounts on library materials in the forms used by our library. The discounts offered by each vendor and the amount is, they are listed here in this table. At the bottom of the table, we have Gobi, ProQuest, and Midwest Tape, who do not have any discounts or materials that work with the services that Colleen Library provides. And the highest, as you can see in the trade books, is 41 to 47%, and that is with Ingram. Conformity and financial impact. It conforms to City of Colleen purchasing policy. It is a recurring expense, and the expenditure is in the amount of $146,000, and future year expenditures are based on an annual appropriation. Alternatives are to choose a different company offering a lower discount from the list of approved TechSmart, TechSmartBuy vendors for the library materials, or to approve the purchase of library materials through Ingram Library Services through the TechSmartBuy program due to higher discounts offered. Staff recommends that city council authorize the purchase of the library books through Ingram Library Services for the duration of the current TechSmartBuy contract in the amount of $146,000, and that is in fiscal year 2025.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There are no questions. Madam Secretary?
RS 24225, consider a memorandum resolution approving an agreement with the Colleen Economic Development Corporation for Economic Development Services in the amount of $885,000.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs. Kiso.
Background information today. The City of Colleen entered into an agreement with KEDC in 1990 and has since renewed the contract every two years. The proposed agreement is for a two-year term and provides funding for day-to-day operations, supplies, salaries, office rental, excuse me, travel expenses, and other administrative costs. The city determines each year's allocation in consultation with KEDC, who is here tonight with Scott Cornell, and sets the responsibility of the city and KEDC, including provisions for the use of the funds in financial reporting. Funding for this year agreement has been included and adopted in the 2025 budget in the amount of $885,000. And staff recommends entering into the agreement with KEDC and continuing our commitment to economic development.
Thank you. There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary?
PH 24051, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z2426, to rezone 35 properties from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, R2 Two-Family Residential District, and R3F Multi-Family Residential District. The subject properties are generally located near the intersection of Shawn Drive and Courtney Lane and are locally addressed as 4103 through 4107, 4201, 4202, 4204, 4206, 4302, 4304 through 4308, and 4310 through 4312 Shawn Drive, 3006, 3105 through 3106, and 3108 Courtney Lane, and 3001 through 3006, 3008 through 3010, 3012, 3101, 3103, and 3105 Honeysuckle Circle, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mrs. Messer, she has these two items. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is a city-initiated rezone request to rezone 35 legal non-conforming properties from B5 to the appropriate residential zoning district, essentially. Again, this is a city-initiated rezoning request, the intent of which is to assist property owners by rezoning their legal non-conforming property in order to establish the current residential use as conforming with the city's zoning and land use regulations. The goal here is to ensure that property owners are better positioned to sell or refinance their property in the future, should they choose to do so, and the rezoning initiative will have no negative impacts on the property, nor will, nor will it affect the property values in any way. The red star indicates the location of the subject property. This is an aerial showing the, the outline of those 35 properties. Again, these are currently all Zone B5. They're all residential uses. Here's a split screen showing on the left the current zoning and on the right the proposed zoning. So staff identified the, the existing use of each of these properties and is, we are assigning the correct zoning district for each of these residential properties. These are the, these are the properties on the north side of Shawn Drive. Properties on the south side of Shawn Drive, these are the duplexes. These are on Honeysuckle, also duplexes. Property is designated neighborhood infill on the growth sector map. This sector includes areas of the city that are already developed and have access to city services, but have vacant, underutilized, or poorly developed properties. And growth properties in this sector are intended to encourage development and redevelopment. The property is designated residential mix on the future land use map, and staff does find that the request is consistent with the residential mix place type. The regional, regional commercial place types. Sorry. I'm sorry, it's designated residential mix and regional commercial. So it's, there's a split there. The regional commercial place type are first identified by their principal focus on auto-oriented traffic and logically placed near high-traffic intersections. This place type encourages 100% non-residential and up to 50% residential use mix. So again, it's consistent with the future land use map. The request also supports or furthers the goals of the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan, including encouraging incremental evolution of neighborhoods and shifting the market to include existing housing. The current land use mix within the area includes 83.99% residential and 16.01% non-residential uses. Water and sewers available. Ingress and egress to the property obviously will not change. These are existing properties. Local, local traffic is not anticipated to change, and therefore, traffic impact analysis is not required. No proposed trails. No flooding concerns. We notified 104 surrounding property owners regarding this request. Of those, 42 reside outside the 200-foot notification boundary, but within the 400-foot notification boundary, and 25 live outside of Colleen. As of the date of this report, staff has received one written response in favor of the request and no responses in opposition. This is the notification boundary. Again, staff finds that the request is consistent with the recommendations of the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and we are recommending approval of this city-initiated request. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
PH 24052, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Colleen Engineering and Surveying, LTD, on behalf of John Helen Purser, 1999 Trust, and Gary W. Purser, Jr., case number Z2431, to rezone approximately 10.56 acres, being the remainder of Lot 13 and all of Lot 14, Block 1, Southwest Crossing Edition, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are generally located northwest of Wells Fargo Drive between Tremere Road and Turkey Trot Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Messer?
Yes, thank you. This item is a request to rezone approximately 10 and 1/2 acres from its current zoning of Agricultural District to the proposed R1 Single Family Residential District. If approved, the applicant intends to develop the property into single-family lots. The applicant estimates that the subject, subject property will yield approximately 20 single-family lots. The red star indicates the location of the subject property. This is an aerial outlining the proposed boundary of the rezoning request. This is a view of the subject property facing north from Wells Fargo. View of the subject property looking south. Facing east on Wells Fargo. And facing west on Wells Fargo. Subject property is designated residential mix on the future land use map. Place type creates neighborhoods built with a traditional walkable block and street grid network that allows a flexible mix of residential building typologies. The place type is, it encourages most residential uses, including single-family detached townhouses, townhouses and smallplex units. This place type encourages 25% non-residential and up to 95% residential use mix. It's also located within the controlled growth sector, which includes areas of the city and within approved municipal utility districts which have access to city infrastructure nearby. Develop, the development proposed in this sector will be evaluated for adherence to the big ideas and recommendations of the plan, particularly those related to housing and neighborhood options and improving Colleen's fiscal health and sustainability. Request is consistent with the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Goals in the comp plan that it adheres to include resource stewardship and fiscally responsible growth and creating neighborhoods and not subdivisions. The Comprehensive Plan promotes incremental redevelopment of properties in Colleen that can add to a widespread improvement. It's also consistent with the following recommendations of the comp plan, and therefore, staff finds that the request is consistent with the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It's located in Development Zone 6, which is currently comprised of approximately 65% residential and approximately 34% commercial uses. Sanitary sewer, water, and drainage will be provided by the city. Ingress and egress is via Wells Fargo and Turkey Trot Road to the east. Both roads are 60-foot wide and classified as rural local streets. Traffic to the proposed zoning, proposed area is not expected to change significantly. However, final determination will be made based on the development pattern proposed at the time of platting. Traffic to impact analysis is not currently required, but may be required depending on the specifics of the proposed development. There is a proposed trail located along the west side of the property. Parkland dedication and fees in lieu of parkland dedication will be required for future development. Based on the potential development of 20 single-family lots for the, the proposed rezoning tonight, the parkland dedication requirements would be approximately 0.3 acres or $15,000 in fees in lieu of, and then an additional $9,000 in park development fees. Properties are in the Little Nolan Creek watershed, and portions of the remainder of Lot 13 and 14 contain a freshwater pond and a freshwater emergent wetland. We notified 18 surrounding property owners of this request, and to date, we have received no written responses for or against the request. This is the notification boundary, showing both the two. for or against the request. This is the notification boundary, showing both the 200 and 400-foot notification boundaries. It's currently vacant, undeveloped, and zoned agricultural. Surrounding area includes single-family residential uses and undeveloped residential property. Staff is of the determination that the applicant's request is consistent with the community character and finds that the request complies with the Comprehensive Plan. So we are recommending approval of the request to rezone the property from agricultural to R1 Single Family as presented. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam, Mrs. Messer. There are no questions for you. Thank you. Mr. Francisco, are we ready for, thank you. We will now go into citizen comments. Four minutes for residents, and one minute time allotted for city council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. This session allows members of the public to address the council regarding any item other than a public hearing item on the agenda for council consideration. The first person is Mr. David Laws. Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes. You have eight minutes. According to state law, there's an interpreter. They get an additional four minutes. So he has eight. I saw faces. Yeah. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. That would be RS 24-226.
This is citizen comments, and he can talk on that item.
I'll try my best. Thank you. Mr. Cagle, what do we have the right here to deserve a salary that is more than 350% higher than the average person residing here in Colleen and any employee here in Colleen? We are shorthanded in the police law enforcement area. Employment in Colleen is almost double the unemployment here in Colleen is almost double the national average. Maybe some of those, we need a grocery store in North Colleen. Why? Maybe some of those items are connected. You are responsible for directing the collection of taxes and fees owed to the city. Yet, there are numerous entities, property owners, and businesses and operations that owe money to the city, and you're not collecting that money. Why? Why? A quote for you. Beware of the quiet man, for while others speak, he watched, and while others act, he plants. And when they finally rest, he strikes. I am the quiet man. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
It was a little hard getting here today through all that downtown traffic and all the museum traffic, which should set the tone for my remarks. When it comes to KEDC, going to fund this entity again, what economic development? Recall last week's meeting, the mayor quoted to the youths who were in the audience, "One day they'll be up here." I'd be willing to bet that no, they won't. Because when I was on my way to the VA yesterday, heading out to I-14, head out to Temple, it was bumper to bumper. I thought I was living back in the Northeast. That was while traffic leaving Colleen. There's no economic development here. It was a trickle of traffic heading into Colleen. You don't see that in New York City, Chicago, any major city you can name. Traffic does not leave the major city to go to employment elsewhere. It's the reverse. We're not doing the right thing. When we deal with the item on the agenda about Mr. Cagle's annual review, I sincerely hope that this will be the last one. I mean, I can hope, I can dream, the last one that we ever have to do for this man. I've said it time and time again, and I'll be doubling up on the remarks of the previous speaker. There are businesses downtown that applied for tax money, whether it was federal, state, local. They applied for tax money to start businesses that aren't doing any business, many of which you yourselves championed and said, "Well, it was going to be such a great economic boom to this city." It's not there. I was having a brief conversation before the meeting with Mr. Ludicki about this issue. Mr. Cagle is not collecting these taxes. I wonder why? Is it because of any close personal associations you all have with some of these business owners? Yet, to make up for economic shortfalls and funding fees, what do we do? Raise our fees. But there again, as the previous speaker said, our police force is woefully undermanned. I would argue that the police force and the numbers that we have able to patrol, based on what we've got, maybe be able to service effectively a town half the size, or roughly. Don't hold me to numbers. But we woefully do not have enough cops. We don't have enough code enforcement. I spoke with code enforcement yesterday. For a town of 160,000 people and over 2,000 miles of road, we have just 10 officers that only work Monday through Friday. A lot of the code violations, like 18-wheelers parking in neighborhoods, happen on weekends. We don't have the personnel. What does this man manage? I mean, sooner or later, it's got to come to a head and rest on somebody's shoulders. It never seems to rest on his. You all love him, but we're the end user in the majority of the results. I don't see the results. What has passed is prologue. He was a disaster in Duncanville when it comes to financial mismanagement. There was a cover letter on an audit done up there. The firm that did the audit said, "We cannot," this is to paraphrase, "we cannot strongly suggest enough that our findings be forwarded to the Department of Justice." The fact that Duncanville didn't do that, that's either here nor there, but that's what a professional accounting firm found. The city of Leander fired him with cause for doing everything that he's doing here. And again, where are the jobs? All he did was build houses. There's a well-documented story about all of this in the Austin Sentinel or whatever the Austin paper is. This man does not deserve what he's earning. Get rid of him.
Melissa Brown, you have four minutes. Every time you have a meeting, you come in, you start off with your invocation, and then you do the Pledge of Allegiance. What are you actually saying when you say, okay, I'll wait. Seems to be a disruption and confusion on the dais. Thank you. So you come in, you say the Pledge of Allegiance, but what are you actually saying when you stand there, you look at the flag, and you put your right hand over your heart, especially for the prior service members who are up here? What you're saying is that is a symbol of our country, our Constitution, and holding true to your vows to uphold the Constitution. And yet, every meeting when I come in here, constitutional rights are violated. The city council, the mayor, even the city manager supports it. Why? What makes you think you have the right to stand up here every single meeting, put your right hand on your heart, and say, "I vow to uphold the Constitution of the United States, protect it, and protect our citizens, and protect their rights, and then turn around and violate them?" When it comes to citizen comments, we're so limited on what it is that we are able to say. That if one of you can't figure out in the slightest bit, especially the person in the center right there, how it relates to the agenda, you're gavelled, you're warned, you're moved, you're called out of order. Guess what? The Constitution, that pledge that you say every meeting says that we have the right to address you, and it doesn't matter if it's on your agenda or not. What matters is if it's important to be the citizens or not. I don't know why I'm getting such confused looks. Because you're there to represent us. At the end of the pledge, it says, "And to the republic for which it stands." By republic, that means that we go out and we elect people who are going to represent us by extension. And yet, that doesn't happen. Week and week and week, you ignore what we have to say. You tell us that we're wrong. You call us liars. You insult us. You feel that it's right to disrespect citizens who come up with valid concerns. But you say, "I vow to protect the republic for which that flag stands," right? No. But it doesn't matter. One nation under God. Well, I understand not everyone's a Christian, not everyone believes in a God, but really what that is saying is that every single person in this country should be treated equally and fairly. That doesn't happen either. I've seen council members, the mayor, the city manager allow special treatment. The city manager allowed Scott Cosper to come up onto the dais during meetings when his project was on the agenda. If any citizen went close to that dais during a meeting, we would be promptly asked to back up, come down off of that ramp, and go back to our seats where we belong, right? No, but we have double standards, and we have special treatments. We have lies being told to us. That's not part of what representatives do. It was quoted in the paper that the, all of the legal fees for a stagecoach cost less than $100,000, but based on the invoices that have been paid so far, we're looking at about $2.1 million in legal fees. Where is our representation?
Is there any other citizens that turn in the citizen comment? Would you please come up here and state your name, please? Let me see if I can find that. Oh, sir, you signed up for public hearing. You signed up for public hearing and not citizen comments. You'll be coming up. And you, thank you. With that being said, we're going to take a five-minute break. Chief, I see the people that want to speak on the public hearing, they're not in here. Can we see, can we get anybody that want to speak on the public hearing? Because once we do the consent agenda, we write it public hearing. I don't know. Let me see whose name. Fanino and Purser. Here you go, Mr. Cagle. Counsel, Mr. Purser has some stuff that he wants y'all to look at. We are on break right now. Anyone that would like to speak on public hearing, please sign up now. All right. Okay, so let's get started. I've given opportunity for people that wanted to speak to come in. We'll call this meeting back to order at 4:20. Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
MN 24029, RS 24221, RS 24222, RS 24223, RS 24224, and RS 24225.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilmember Solomon, can I get a motion of approval for the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Consent agenda passes 5 to 0. Public hearing. Counsel, Mrs., I'm so used to him. Mrs. Messer, she has Uh, Mrs. Messer, she has gone through a PowerPoint slide, would you care for her to go back through it? All right. We're on public hearing item PH dash 24 dash 051. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I need to read the caption of the law.
Oh, sorry. Uh, just start back over there. Madam Secretary.
PH 24051, hold a public hearing and consider a city initiated request, case number Z 2426, to rezone 35 properties from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, R2 Two Family Residential District, and R3F Multi Family Residential District. The subject properties are generally located near the intersection of Shawn Drive and Courtney Lane and are locally addressed as 31, excuse me, 4103 through 4107, 4201, 4202, 4204, 4206, 4302, 4304 through 4308, and 4310 through 4312 Shawn Drive, 3006, 3105 through 3106, and 3108 Courtney Lane, and 3001 through 3006, 3008 through 3010, 3012, 3101, 3103, and 3105 Honeysuckle Circle, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of lots 4 through 7, Block 1, Deanne subdivision, Lot 14A, Block 1 of the Deanne subdivision replat of lots 8 through 15, and part of Lot 2, Block 1. Lot 13B, Block 1 of the Deanne subdivision being a replat of Lot 13A, of the replat of lots 8 through 15, and part of Lot 2, Block 1, from B5 Business District to R3F Multi Family Residential District. Lots 3 through 11, Block 2, Deanne subdivision. Lots 12A and 12B, Block 2 being a replat of Lot 12, Block 2, Deanne subdivision. Lot 13A, Block 1 of the Deanne subdivision being a replat of Lot 13A, of the replat of lots 8 through 15, and part of Lot 2, Block 1. Lots 9A and 9B, Block 3 of the Deanne subdivision being a replat of Lot 9 of the Deanne subdivision. Lots 8, 10 through 12, 13, 15 through 17, 19 through 23, Block 3, Deanne subdivision. Lot 2, Block 1, Patriot Pontiac Edition from B5 Business District to R22 Family Residential District, and Lot 4, Block 3 of Deanne subdivision from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mrs. Messer has gone through the PowerPoint. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? With that being said, public hearing open. Public hearing closed. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve item PH 24051.
Councilmember Boyd.
I second.
All in favor of approving PH dash 24 dash 051? Vote yes. All opposed, no. Motion carried five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24052, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Colleen Engineering and Surveying LTD on behalf of John Helen Perser, 1999 Trust, and Gary W. Perser Jr., case number Z 2431, to rezone approximately 10.56 acres being the remainder of Lot 13 and all of Lot 14, Block 1 Southwest Crossing Edition from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are generally located northwest of Wells Fargo Drive between Trumier Road and Turkey Trot Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 10.56 acres being the remainder of Lot 13 and all of Lot 14, Block 1 Southwest Crossing Edition from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mrs. Messer has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? Is the applicant here? Sir, would you like to speak? You have, state your name. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Council, city manager, city mayor, city. I passed out something I'd like for y'all to look at. And this is your future land use map. And on the future land use map, I circled where my property is, okay? And it says residential mix. That's y'all's future land use map, residential mix. Now, if you'll turn the page to the next page, y'all tell me what I can do in residential mix. This is the city telling me. And I highlighted the primary uses under red, everybody there, this one right here. The primary uses under residential mix. And this is by y'all, not me, but the, one of the primary uses is duplexes and fourplexes. By your own standards, I came down here, I wanted duplexes. I wanted R2. The staff would not support it.
Mr. Perser.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a zoning item.
And I'm talking about zoning, ma'am.
Madam City Attorney, is he on the agenda?
R2 is another zoning classification. It's not the zoning classification that was requested in this application, but it is a zoning, uh, it is a zoning issue.
Madam City Attorney, can he discuss that item?
Ma'am, if it, would you cut stop the clock, ma'am, please?
Give him back time. I think he spoke like maybe 12 seconds.
At least.
So I want clarity on that. Can he speak on the item?
I believe he's talking about a zoning, a zoning issue. So he's, it's an applica- application for Z, R1, but he's saying he wanted R2.
I'm speaking on a zoning item for this particular property, ma'am.
Mr. Perser, the clock has stopped. Give me one moment. Madam Secretary, you give him back his, uh, four minutes. And he spoke for 12 and let 12 seconds run down. I, I didn't stop the clock when I asked the question.
Are we ready?
Not yet. And Madam City Attorney, I will be calling on you because I'm going to make sure, or looking at why we stay on the agenda on a zoning item. Mr. Perser, floor yours.
Ma'am?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Future land use map was the first one we looked at. Now we're looking under residential mix, which is what the future land use map told me. Under residential mix, your primary uses, there's five of them. One of those primary uses is duplexes and fourplexes. I came to the city and asked for duplexes, asked that support it. They said no. The staff will not support it. I just listened to a 30-minute, nice, nice presentation by Mr. Larruel about Featherline. Made it all real good. They won't support their own stuff. And this has led to more problems because they won't accept my plat. And they, we were out here struggling and I, none of y'all want to talk to me and that's fine, uh, but I've got to have time to explain things to y'all. But when your own staff and the city manager was in one of these meetings, and I'm surprised that somebody didn't correct staff and say, "Give me a good reason why you're not supporting what we claim is a primary use." It didn't happen. So that's a problem, guys. And the staff will not support it. Well, I can't go to P and Z and come out with no support and get a super majority. It ain't happening. And that's very frustrating because I'm just trying to follow your rules. Usually it's the other way. I want you to change something. That's more threat, that's more challenging. I would like somebody to tell me why the staff won't support residential mix and the, and the primary uses under residential mix. That's not a big ask. Somebody ought to be able to tell me. It's what y'all say. So there, there'll be, there will be a response. I won't probably agree with it, but it's what y'all say, it's what y'all said, it's the rules y'all made, and I'm trying to follow them for once in my life and I can't do it. That's very frustrating. That led to other challenges for this property. And we can go, they ain't going to let me go through. I, I gave y'all a packet. I would appreciate if I could talk to y'all and explain my position on many, many items. There's some gray area out there and the city took the gray side of it. I want to take my gray side of it. But this is very frustrating because I cannot plat my property until I get it zoned, which doesn't make any sense because I can, ought to be able to plat my property. And I just want to know why I can't do what y'all tell me to do and why the staff won't support it. And I've had multiple meetings with them and I've had one with the city manager in the room. Nobody has said why, we're just not going to do it. That's, that's horrendous. It's horrendous. And that's very frustrating. And it's not right. It's wrong. And I would appreciate if somebody would correct it, whoever that is. I don't care who it is, but it's wrong. They don't get to pick and choose. It's under their primary use. It's under their future land use map. And all I'm asking for is some duplexes on a horseshoe which y'all's on. I had it zoned at R1. I'm not, only reason I was zoned at R1 is because they wouldn't support duplexes. So then I'm going to fight for months and months and months and I can't move forward. I can't turn a plat in. I will be coming back for this same piece of property for R2. And, and so I had to go through a step that cost me time, effort, money, then following the rules. But I will come back for R2. But I couldn't do it right now. I had to go to R1, which ain't what I wanted. And I can't plat my property. I can't do anything.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, yes, Mr. Kegel would like to speak.
I just want to answer the question. I was in that meeting and I heard a distinct answer. Mr. Perser was even told before that meeting, he was welcome to ask for any type of zoning he wanted. This is what we're recommending, but as we have seen, council, P and Z and staff don't always agree. He should have asked for the zoning that he really wanted. But to go to the issue of the future land use map, if you follow what Mr. Perser is saying, we'd have no reason to have single family and townhouse or duplex or fourplex zoning if anything is allowed, um, un- under the flume. No, those are options that are allowed in that area. And what he was told was because across the street was large lot, single family, it was preferable to have single family and then as you move to the west on the other side of his property, that duplexes were, were more appropriate. And he told us in that meeting that I was in, that those people across the street used to be in the county, they were annexed and it doesn't matter. We gave him the reason. I heard it from the planning director, the reason that was given, and that he was welcome to ask for any zoning that he wanted. So there's the answer, I believe, for the third time.
Thank you. We will now have public hearing. Public hearing is open. Michael Fornino. You have four minutes. Mr. Perser, you'll follow him.
Had to fight my way through 40,000 people from District 4. When it comes to Mr. Perser's request, okay, just in transparency here, Mr. Perser and I, we've had discussions from time to time. Not like we do business with each other. I agree with him half the time and disagree with him half the time. But with regard to his issue here, I fully support him. As my own council district representative is fond of saying, "It's your money, your land, you can do what you want." Or are we just going to default to that hypocrisy, apostasy here as we pick and choose? I mean, it's, I'm not going to say the person's name out loud, but what's across the street? I'm sorry, but if a member of the committee of 12 doesn't like duplexes going across his house or going across the street from his own house, I don't care. I see the look of confusion on Mr. Kegel's face, but you know, he manages a city that he knows very little about. Is that Rosewood working out, that raised speed limit as of yesterday as a point of expertise? When we're dealing with this, it's a small plot of land. It's not like last week's issue that you ignored the will of the people. It's not a large plot of land in comparison. There's not a lot of opposition from the people who live near it, other than save one or two well-moneyed individuals that can't bear the type of people that would be living across the street from him if he had duplexes. Mr. Perser has a very well-established repres- reputation in town, if not the general area. He builds to standard. He builds well. He plans well. Let him have it. I mean, he, he's given more to this community. And I think in some cases, he's given more than what's asked. So to give him any static over a fractionally comparable size of land as to what we were dealing with last week, I mean, the man comes prepared. He doesn't have to have a legion of a dozen, a dozen and a half people up here telling how they knew him man and boy and, "Oh, I've done business with him before and this is going to be a big boom." I mean, whether it's single family, duplex, multimillion dollar mansions, it doesn't matter. I mean, it's not like Mr. Kegel is going to spend the time to collect the taxes on him. So let, give due consideration for the planning that Mr. Perser is well-known for. He's articulate. He's prepared. It's his land, his money. Again, that, that little trope's been used up here. Why would it apply to others and not to him? So once again, we already know where your loyalties as the last week lie. Give the man a fair chance. If there's a paperwork issue, let him fill out the right paperwork and let him do with his land and develop it as he sees fit, not as you and your experts and members of staff that we never really see their faces or other names attached to their work and their expertise, especially when these experts have never even swung a hammer, maybe to hang a picture in their own apartment, even if they live in the city. Thank you.
Gary Perser, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Uh, I'd just like to address the comment. Mr. Kegel said, "I did not ask for R2." Yes, I did. They told me they would not support it. I asked Ms. Wallace, she's sitting right here, I wanted R2, and I asked her several times. And the second time around is when Mr. Kegel sat in the meeting. So to say that I didn't ask for R2 is not correct because that's what I wanted and that's what you heard in that meeting. And if we want to talk about the property next door, y'all need to understand some history. And Mr. Ramon, you may understand this very well. That was a county subdivision. It's got big lots. That's what I heard from Ms. Wallace. We want big lots. We want this. That was a county subdivision. And the reason it went to the county because they didn't have to follow the standards. They didn't have to go through the expense. So people went to the county. They didn't have to curb and gutter it. They didn't put no sewer in the job. They didn't put asphalt down, they put squirt top. So that's fine. If y'all want me to develop that kind of stuff, I'll get after it as soon as I can find a piece of property, but let me develop it by the standards. I can't develop that kind of property by the standards that y'all working today. And the city went out there and spent a lot of money putting a sewer line in. And y'all can check that out because it was annexed. Yeah, so y'all grow into it. These things are in the peripheral. Say they're out there 10, 20 years, y'all grow into them, then get, guess who gets the problem? The city. And I've wanted R2 out here since day one. And I've met three times with Wallace and one time with Wallace and Mr. Kent Kegel, and they will not support it. And they told me they wasn't going to support it. And that means I got to get a super majority from the planning and zoning. That's wrong. That is nothing but wrong. And I'll tell you that till the cows come home. They won't even support what they tell me the primary use is. And that is not right. And somebody ought to straighten it out. I don't care if it's their boss, their boss's boss, I don't care if it's seven city council members. Somebody ought to say what is going on and why. And that's all I have to say. But that is not what happened. I wanted R2. I had to go to R1 and y'all understand, I can't plat my property till I get it zoned. So I got to get it platted. I can't argue month after month about R2. R2 is going to be a challenge. So I'll postpone that argument till later and I'll move forward and I'll come back and address it at a later date. And that's all that's ever happened here from day one. And that's all that's ever happened here from day one. And I took the plan to Wallace, Ms. Wallace, I apologize. But I took my concept plan to her five, six, seven months ago. And I asked her at that time, "What can you support?" It was just a concept plan. And then here comes offense ordinance. Nobody even knew about it. Comes the fence ordinance. Council didn't know, but I asked them. This is way before y'all heard about that.
Mr. Perser, we got to get back on zoning.
I'm on the same piece of property. But anyway, I'm finished, Mayor, and I appreciate y'all's time. And I would appreciate if somebody looks into it and can tell me why the staff, including the city manager, cannot support what their own rules say. Y'all paid a lot of money for comprehensive plan. You paid a lot of money for that. And you ought to follow it when you can.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Cagle.
I have a question in reference to... Mr. Perser said a lot, and if I'm off track, Madam City Attorney, please give me back. I don't know the conversations that was had, but can we try to get some clarity because a lot of things... Ms. Mesher, you can come up too. A lot of things were said, so can we get some clarity on a conversation that we were not involved in? Mr. Cagle.
First of all, staff recommendation does not kick in a supermajority at P&amp;Z. So, the request from Mr. Perser is in front of you tonight. That is a request. He was told that staff would not support this. Not that staff wanted large lot subdivision there, but they said the single-family was more of a transition from the large lot over to duplex. That's what he was told. And Ms. Mesher, if you want to add anything to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things. There were... I did have a conversation with Mr. Perser about the prospect of duplexes in this particular location. At that time, I advised that staff would likely not support the request for duplexes in that location. As you know, with every zoning case, we look at a lot of different factors. One is the future land use map.
I apologize. You advise staff not to support?
We advise Mr. Perser, that staff, that we would not support a request for duplexes in this location. That was a meeting that Mr. Perser and I had. I advised him that we would likely not support a request for R2, but that we could support a request for R1.
Did you tell him why we weren't going to support it?
With every zoning case, we look at a couple of different factors. One is the future land use map and what it allows. And the other is the character and context of the surrounding area. So, in this case, we looked at both factors. And while the comprehensive plan does allow for duplexes in the residential mix place type, we also look at the character of the surrounding area. In this case, as you saw in my presentation, it's a rural character. There are cows. And so, it's a large lot, single-family character, predominantly on the eastern side of Mr. Perser's property. On the western side, closer to Tremere, there's a more dense character. So, what I told Mr. Perser was that in the location that he's proposing that's before you tonight, that we would not support duplexes, but that we would support R1. So, he subsequently submitted a request to rezone the property from Ag to R1, which is what is before you tonight. Had he submitted a request to rezone the property from Ag to R2, that request would be before you tonight, but it's not. Because what he submitted was a request for R1.
So, for single house compared to duplexes?
That's right.
That's what? Okay. Okay. All right. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for the explanation, Ms. Wallace. I was looking for the other portion of it to just kind of reconcile. And so, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Abreu.
Thank you, Mayor. So, it sounds like what, at least from what I'm hearing, is Mr. Perser had a conversation with staff. His initial intent and want was for R2 duplex zoning. You mentioned that staff would not support R2 duplex zoning, but they would support R1, single-family detached zoning. He went with that. He believed it was the path of least resistance. Went through P&amp;Z with the recommendation to approve. We're here today. Mr. Perser saying, "I really wanted R2, but I chose the path of least resistance," and here we are today. So, it sounds like, I mean, we're here, we're going to vote on R1. I'm assuming Mr. Perser has his Plan B to bring it back for R2. I'm assuming staff's position will not change. If that goes to P&amp;Z without staff's support, P&amp;Z can still vote any way that they want. If they vote to recommend approval of it, then it will come to city council, will not need a supermajority vote unless P&amp;Z votes to recommend disapproval. That being said, you know, there's a lot of raw land around this. Is there... I don't know if y'all's conversations with Mr. Perser, was there any conversation of, is there a portion of the available land that staff would support R2 duplex zoning? Is there something that, you know, could maybe be part of a larger master plan? I don't know. I'm just kind of spitballing. And maybe there's a compromise in there somewhere. I don't know. But maybe some food for thought. I do agree that it can be frustrating if someone reading the comprehensive plan and this is what they see and it really doesn't... Obviously, you can't call out every single scenario in the comprehensive plan. And we have to rely on the judgment of our professionals on staff. But maybe something to keep in mind, I guess, for a future if we're going to look to make any amendments or clarifications. But hopefully, Mr. Perser and staff, y'all can talk about this and maybe there's room for some compromise. Maybe there's not, and it comes back to council and we'll, I guess, have to vote whatever you bring to us. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Counsel, I just want to remind you, it's what's on the agenda. The agenda item is zoning. So, we have to stay within the open meeting act. I just want to give a fair warning for the next two speakers so we can stay focused. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Wallace, what... I saw that P&amp;Z voted 6 to 1 with one dissenting because he wanted bigger lots. What was the general discussion? And was R2 brought up to the P&amp;Z?
R2 was not discussed with P&amp;Z for this particular property. As I said, the request was for R1, so that was the request before the commission, and that's what they voted on. The one commissioner that did not vote in favor of the motion stated that he actually preferred a larger lot than R1. So, an AR1 or something along those lines, SF... S-R1.
Okay, thanks.
Something larger than R1. Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Cobb.
Good evening. To me, this sounds like an old-fashioned misunderstanding of zoning. What does it do to start... How... Is it a long type of process to start over, to start this process over again?
Well, the item on the agenda is zoning.
Right, zoning. Can we go back and reset and look at this again? I mean, I'm just trying to see because either way...
The item is this. If Mr. Perser want to pull this item, correct me, Madam City Attorney, he can pull this item.
He could request the item to be pulled.
And you don't even have to vote on it. But I don't want us to lose sight. This is not about R2.
Okay.
The item on the agenda is a R1 item. So, if he does not, Mr. Perser want this to go through, he can say right now, "I don't want you voting on it. I want to pull it and I want to resubmit a R2."
And that's where I'm going. How long does it take to resubmit the R2?
Whenever he turn it in.
So, would it take months, years?
The process to request rezoning typically takes about eight weeks from the time that it's submitted until the time that it goes to council. So, he submitted this request approximately eight weeks ago. Whether this request is approved or denied tonight, he can still submit a request for R2.
And it still takes eight weeks?
Yes.
Those are my questions. I was just... It does sound like a just total misunderstanding of zoning and what was going on here.
Is there any... Hold on, Councilmember Boyd. Is there any other options to counsel? I'm just, I don't know. Because I see where you went with that. You want to know what options do we have? Can you change it from a R1 to R2 tonight? Do they... Is that what you... Well, you need to say what you're trying to say.
Well, I didn't exactly want to say that because I know it's the owner who asked for this R1. We need to go back and talk to the staff. And I know if we needed to resume, does that happen in council meeting? Or does that happen in another meeting? Yes, ma'am.
The council can approve the zoning as requested in the application, which is R1, or a more restrictive zoning classification, but not a less restrictive zoning classification. So, you could not approve R2 tonight.
Okay. So, does that answer your question? Okay. I saw you saying, but, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. All right. Okay. Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. So, we talking about zoning R1. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do recognize this is a 10, plus or minus 10-acre tract amongst the larger tract of acreage. Do we know if the intent is to... If R2... Well, is the intent to surround this property with R2? Or is it just one segment being requested for R2?
So, you'll recall at your meeting, two or three meetings back, there was a request also by Mr. Perser to rezone the property that's adjacent to this property on tonight's agenda. The property to the north and the west was requested to be rezoned also from Ag to R1. So, as I understand it, his intent is to subdivide all the parcels that he owns in this vicinity for residential use.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve PH... My screen went dead, sorry. PH 24052.
Councilmember Solomon.
I had a question.
Okay, Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Adams, I mean Solomon. You can discuss now.
If it's approved, if this is approved, could he come back and request to change to an R2?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Councilwoman Cobb, you're out of order.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Solomon?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to call Mr. Perser one more time. Mr. Perser, I just want to get some clarification before the council vote. Do you want to pull this item or you want them to go forward? Because it cannot be changed by this council to an R2.
No, ma'am. I want us to go forward where I can move forward with the plat.
Thank you. With that being said, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. The motion carries 5 to 0.
DS 24073, conduct annual evaluation of the city manager.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, VTCA Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a close meeting of the city council on the 9th day of December 2024, 4:55 at 4:55 PM Section 551.074, Personnel Matters. The city council will conduct the city manager annual review. Public discussion of this matter will not be in the best interest of the city. Agenda item DS-24-073. I will call the meeting back to order at 6:38. The council is out of close meeting. Madam Secretary, resolutions.
RS 24226, consider a memorandum resolution confirming the city manager's annual evaluation and pay increase.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, can I get a motion to consider a memorandum resolution confirming the city manager's annual evaluation and pay increase, which is COLA 4%? So, its increase would be of COLA, a 4% COLA increase, which would take his salary to $280,802.
I make the motion. I state it.
Councilmember Cobb.
I second that motion.
So, to make it clear, RS-24-226, a motion to consider a memorandum resolution confirming the city manager's annual evaluation, which is in pay increase. The pay increase is a 4% COLA only. No increase in salary, but a 4% COLA, which would take his salary to $280,802. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries 5 to 0. Counsel, before we dismiss into our residents and staff, everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we adjourn.
Can I get a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.